I am going to call our regular business meeting for June to order. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, June 25th, 2021.
May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Castellano?
Here.
I'm going to ask everyone to please join me in saluting the flag following the flag salute. If we can remain standing for a moment of silence for Eleanor Mason. She's a paraprofessional in our district since 1981.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its liberty public, which stands one nation, united in the principle of the first amendment of the Constitution.
So, welcome again. I'm sorry we were a couple of minutes late. There's quite a bit going on right now. The very first thing I need to do is get a motion on the minutes, and that's 4.1 through 4.4.
Motion.
Second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, so again, welcome to our June business meeting. And as has been the case, we have a lot to do. I mentioned last week that we really had a great finish to the school year. A lot of wonderful activities culminating in our graduation, which was absolutely fantastic. And now we're very busy preparing not only for our summer educational offerings, but also for back to school next September. And in addition to that, I'm sure everyone's aware, the governor and the state issued new guidance just yesterday afternoon that we are needing to examine and study and begin to process and act upon. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Gricio for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Castellano, members of the board, members of the public. Thanks for being here with us on this hot, hazy, humid day, but summer is upon us. And like Mr. Castellano said, we have a lot to celebrate for a great school year and a lot to look forward to, starting as early as next week, as we begin our summer programs. So, as always, I cover happenings in the district based on our three district learning goals. Can we hit the light a little bit? Because it looks like the color I used is conducive to this room. There we go. Okay, so under student achievement throughout the last month between our two board meetings, we celebrated spring concerts throughout the district. Our middle schools had National Honor Society induction ceremonies. Our CIEE program has sent seven of our students across the sea to study in Costa Rica, Spain, Italy, and they'll be there for the next couple of weeks. We celebrated our varsity scholars at the high school, our spring arts showcase, senior awards at the high school, middle school honor and merit roles, and our annual gifted and talented capstone projects. We also celebrated the first ever girls' state championship in track and field, and these lovely ladies ran their hearts out and showed their talents and brought home that golden state trophy to Egg Harbor Township High School. And we are more than proud of them. We are so pleased with the efforts that they put forth and how they represent our school district. They were going to be here tonight, but they were very busy, so we scheduled them for July. Also, congratulations to our boys' crew team, the Varsity Eight Boat, and Coach Kelly, who was Atlantic City Press Team of the Year, Coach of the Year, and this Varsity Eight Boat was undefeated all year long. So, again, I'd like to highlight the positives that go in our district. Despite a global pandemic and all that these children and coaches and teachers have been through, we are still seeing championships and accomplishments in academics and fine and performing arts, and, you know, our students and teachers and our school community is absolutely amazing. Speaking about amazing, our 2021 commencement ceremony, I stand here this year, as I do every year, and say it is the most dignified ceremony, graduation ceremony, in all of New Jersey. Very, very proud of how it's organized, how it's set up, and how it is student-centered. All right, so, great job. Congratulations for their student achievement, because that's what we're all about, to get our students to graduation day. But also, congratulations to the students for making their parents proud. And we received many, many comments of, wow, how did you do that? How did you get 524 students to follow, you know, direction and sit and stand at the same time? And that's because Ms. Valerie Quinn puts time and effort into that with her graduation staff, but she's learned from the finest, because this is a tradition at Egg Harbor Township High School, and one that we're proud of, from the starburst, to the colors, to the music, to all that the students participate in. And again, we tell them, this is for your parents, all right? This is for your parents, make them proud, and they surely did. So, congratulations, hats off to the class of 2021. Continuing with their achievements, there was 524 diplomas issued, $17.2 million in scholarships. We received the Old Grad Award. And if you remember Ahmad Brooks, he was here as a soccer American All-Star, but he received the Old Grad Award, which is a prestigious award in athletics throughout the county for hundreds of years. So, that was presented to him. Appointments to Army and Navy. And here are our students who are going to Army and Navy this year. We also have students in our top 10 that will be attending Villanova, NYU, University of the Sciences, Bucknell, Northeastern, Ohio State University. Am I bragging? Yes. I want the public to know that Egg Harbor Township has fine programs from academics, athletics, to fine and performing arts, clubs, activities, you name it, we have it. Our students achieve, and they're going to go out into the world to further education at prestigious colleges and universities. So, EHT proud. For climate and culture, our school safety team meetings have met to review HIV cases and some of the procedures that are in place to keep our schools safe and to make sure we're addressing our harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy and procedures. Professional development was held last week on Mondays and Tuesdays for all district administrators. Ms. Moss led that and the administrative staff through many topics. One was the MTS S. Another was equity, and Ms. Yolanda Melville and Ms. Amy Halk Elko presented to our staff the importance of equity, and we had letters training, to name a few. So, two days of eight-hour training in this room in the older library last week. So, we got our administrators while they were coming off a rough year, but getting them already prepared for next year. Also, climate and culture, we were able to hold the prom for our high school students, and that was a great event down in Atlantic City at the Sheraton. We celebrated Students of the Week. Our Renaissance themes have been shared for next year. The principals have shared them with me, and already are creating their videos and their ideas for opening day as we welcome all our students back into the buildings. Senior picnic, as well as other school picnics, were held throughout the district. Miller's Got Talent event, and the first Miller Olympiad was held. So, again, the schools were able to hold events and provide students with a little bit of fun at the end of the year as well. Our community partnerships. I want to make sure I highlight this to our community. If you look on the district newsletter, which is on the school website, you will see these resources listed throughout the newsletter, throughout the high school and middle school and other school district newsletters. We call them the smores. But these are partnerships right now that we have formed for resources for our school community, our parents, our children. If anyone is in need of anything, from the need for food, mental and health counseling, the Department of Children and Families offering assistance with food and how to get jobs. New Jersey Help and Healing is helping anyone that's having problems or anxieties with COVID-19. We also have the Anxiety and Depression Support Group. Atlantic Care is providing food. Atlantic County Prevention Resources, anything from suicide or different thoughts that the students will have that are making them feel anxious or depressed. And also, we have our own Pursuing Public Health series that can be found on our district website, as well as our Egg Harbor Township Guidance Department. So, as we end the school year, I don't want anyone to feel that, you know, we shut down or we're not there for our students and our families. We absolutely are. The district is open, you know, year-round throughout the summer, but these community partnerships have been in place, we've made connections with them, and there are resources that folks can reach out to. If you have any questions, feel free to call any of the schools, speak to the principal or the guidance office, and they can direct you and assist you if you need more assistance. The AHT Ready Summer Program is ready to take off. Right now, our Talons and our Aspire Programs, they began last week, June 21st, and they run through August. But these are some of the offerings that we have this summer. Our aviation offering will begin July 19th, and also, again, on July 26th. That's for current seventh and eighth graders. Ready for High School is for our current eighth grader and ninth graders. That begins July 12th. Our Comic Camp, which is our Communications Academy, that will begin on August 9th. Our Extended School Year Supplemental Program begins next week, July 6th, and that runs to August 19th. We have Ready to Learn that's going on for identified students K through seven. That begins July 12th. Credit Completion, students that need to make seat time makeup. It was held on June 26th, and then again, July 12th and August 2nd. And then Eagle Academy has a program for current Eagle students beginning July 6th. So, we have a lot going on this summer. The buildings that will be used, definitely Miller School, High School, and Davenport. All right, so that will be open. They will be filled with students and teachers. Okay, some school community reminders. Registration is still open, and we encourage that registration for families who are qualified for free and reduced lunch. Again, there are many, many perks, if you will, that come with this, but also for the district to be able to have an accurate count in order to receive the funding that's available for the district. So, please, you know, if you receive free and reduced lunch, go ahead. Even though lunch will be free next year to all, make sure you register so that you're on record. Also kindergarten, kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, Egg Harbor Township Schools, it is here. We are moving forward with it. We have for last year, but because of COVID, it was a little different, but it will be a full day. So, we encourage those students of age, parents, to please, please register now. Don't wait till you see that yellow school bus drive by on September 6th. All right? We also have job opportunities, and we need bus drivers. So, if you know of anyone who would be willing or interested in driving a bus, we need bus drivers, okay? We train them, we pay for the training, we pay for what they need to get prepared to do so. So, spread the word. Some updates with COVID-19. District cases right now, zero. Egg Harbor Township cases, two. County status, moderate. We just received word from the NJ DOE, and I'm not going to stand here and smile and say, oh, yes, we finally got clear guidance. We did not, okay? And I am beyond frustrated, but where we are right now, we start programs next week, July 6th. What we are going to do, and why this guidance is a little unclear and different, and I'm not going to get into comparing what it was and what it is now, but mandate, students have to wear masks on buses. I didn't make it up. I didn't put it in place. That's the mandate, okay? Excuse me. So, students have to wear masks on buses. When they get in the school, once they get to their desk, mask-wearing is optional. Once they get to their desk, they will be enclosed with their desk shield, and we practice social distancing, we should be fine. So, mask-wearing is optional once the child gets to their desk. We will continue with sanitizing, and I ask you all to please be flexible in understanding. The governor made a statement about September. That was yesterday. I am not going to make a statement about September, because I still need time to speak to pandemic teams, the principals, and then we will make a decision in July, at the July meeting. We may be prepared to make that or share that decision, but throughout next week's step follow that, we will make a decision and share with the school community as to where we are for September. Baby steps. Let's look at what we have in front of us. We begin July 6th entering our schools. Masks need to be worn on school buses. They are optional once the child gets behind their desk. It is encouraged for non-vaccinated folks to wear masks. If you are vaccinated, we have been informed, and as we've been through this whole pandemic situation, we have learned that a vaccinated person is protected. So, congratulations and thank yous. Congratulations to the class of 2021. Congratulations to students who are moving up to that next grade level. Congratulations to our retirees this year for your service, for your flexibility, understanding, and patience of a very difficult school year, but together, we bonded, and we got through it, and we got through it well. Also, a big thank you to Project Graduation staff, who could not have the annual event. Did a great job with securing prizes for our seniors, helping out with senior picnic, holding the raffle, and raising money for our students. So, again, while we physically did not have it, the folks who are involved in that and the volunteers put in a lot of time, because they care about our students, and that's what it's all about, all about the kids. So, thank you to teachers, administration, parents, school community, and the Board of Education for your support and understanding this year, as we navigate it through a very, very, very rough year. Here is the visual of some things that happened in the All right, well, there you go. Brings a smile to everybody's face, chokes me up, because that was the year in review. We can stand here with smiles. You saw the smiles of the kids, and that's what it's all about. So, thank you again, everyone, for sticking by us through this hall, and it's just so great to be able to show. We did it! We did it! So, thank you again. At this time, Mr. Castellano, I think we have a little presentation, a big presentation. Mr. Castellano, Board President, is going to present an award here, a plaque that shows recognition of service to the Board of Education. And, you know, we have outgoing board members here and there, but we don't want anyone to think that we forget about them as they move on to different things. So, right now, we have Mr. Ray Ellis, who we would like to recognize for his service to the Board of Education.
...to Board of Education member Ray Ellis, with greatest appreciation for dedicated service to the children and schools of Egg Harbor Township, January 2014 through December 2020. There you are, sir. Congratulations. Thank you very much for your service.
You have some people in the back. We'll secure them out.
Thank you very much for your service, Ray. It's a volunteer job, you know, people don't realize, and all the time and effort that we put in as volunteers. So, we thank you.
After eight years, I gotta say something. Yeah, I did three terms, and it was sad that I left. But I left, and I still feel a little sad, because I didn't accomplish some things I wanted to accomplish. For instance, I love the staff. The teachers, unbelievable. The teachers always supported me, but it was sad to know that their union reps never did, never endorsed. Also, in my three terms over eight years, I never took one penny from anybody. I had 12 signs. My opponents, they had 2, 300 signs. That's because the people know I'm there in the community and there for them. But like I said, they're paraprofessionals. I still feel sad that they're not getting proper due. And I fought and fought and fought to recognize them, just like all the staff in Egg Harbor Township is great, you know? My thing is, Egg Harbor Township's curriculum, tried to help that in certain ways. A lot of our kids, best curriculum, you could compare it to St. Olm. You could compare it to Better Than St. Olm, Better Than Spirit, best curriculum, but that's for the college-bound. I failed to help the non-college-bound, because we send kids to Harvard, we send kids to Yale, but the rest of our kids come and go to Wal-Mart and Wawa. We have to do more for the non-college-bound kid. Our staff, especially our staff, is unbelievable under Dr. Gricio's leadership, you know? So, I want to thank them for working so hard. I also want to say, like I said, we, as board members, are here for policy, here to assist, not to micromanage staff, because staff is your professionals, your superintendent, your facility, your BA, and all that. They're the professionals. We're elected officials. We might last three years. So, let's support our staff, let's support our kids, and let's EHT be great. Like they always say, embrace, educate, educate, be the greatest school of all. And I just want to thank you for my years of being here. We moved on. I also developed a relationship with the school. I am now the Township Committee Man, and we developed a relationship with the school so we could do things together. This is our town. Why are they separate? You know, they have never really worked together. And I was eight years, I never saw the Township Committee or the school real-world working together. We're going to work together. It's all about one common goal, to educate our kids the best way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis, for your service, and thank you for your focus on students. We also have another recognition for Mrs. Amy Summer. I don't think she's with us this evening, but if Mr. Castellano, if you want to read that.
I'm just, I'm going to read this. Mrs. Summer could not be with us. We will mail this out to her, but I do want to recognize Ms. Summer, Mrs. Summer as well. She was an excellent board member, and she will be missed. And this reads, "Presented to Board of Education member Mrs. Amy Summer, with greatest appreciation for dedicated service to the children and schools of Egg Harbor Township, January 2018 through December 2020." So, we thank you, Mrs. Summer.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Castellano. That concludes our recognition for this evening, and our next presentation will be from our Director of Facilities, Mr. Tim Brunetta.
How is everyone this evening? I'm sorry to be talking about the serious stuff, because we have a lot coming up, and I wanted to go over with you and describe our plan for capital projects moving forward. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Tim Brunetta. I'm the Director of Facilities, as well as the project manager for the school district. And if I could ask Ms. Anaya to, as a basis for starting this conversation, she's much more familiar with the graphic and the information you see in front of you. So, I would ask if she could please explain what you're looking at now, and then I can take it from there.
Sure. Forgive me for not standing up there, just basically give a recap. This was also provided during the budget process. Basically, the next two slides, all of you have it attached to your board docs if you want to look at it. The next two slides talk about, for the past few years, the money's going in and out of capital reserve. Capital reserve was one of those buckets we talked about. That is funded on its own and has to be spent towards improvements of buildings and our structures, our guts of our buildings. So, there's a little history on two slides. I mean, you can hit the next slide as well, of things that have been, the board had donated, contributed to the fund, as well as how the funds were spent for the last few years. Emphasis on this school year closeout, on the resolution on this board agenda, as well as what was budgeted for next year. So, without further ado, next slide. Part of that budget process, we did a flag, $10 million for capital improvements with the emphasis on our HVAC systems. But as you'll see in those other two slides, every year we have projects that come up anyway, that just have to be done outside of just general replacements. So, the $10 million was basically a combination of some excess surplus. This year's excess surplus, we identified during the budget season, because of our closure, we had identified some funds we weren't going to be spending of $3.5 million. Also in that is the Esser funds. Remember for Esser, too, we spent it on tuition, some other things that we kind of used off our local budget, so we could put money into capital, as well as the emergency reserve for $1 million, which we're going to be withdrawing due to an increase in health insurance and capital needs. And now, we'll turn it back over to Mr. Brunetta. Thank you.
Now, before I begin, I want to make everybody aware, and I want to update the board, as well as the public, of what's going on for the last 14 months. So, while the pandemic was in full swing from the very beginning, people were home, people were sheltering, people were trying to stay safe, we were here. My team, my staff. I don't know how to put in words. The dedication, the commitment. It's beyond service. It's easy today to look back now and say, well, we know a lot more. You know, we see what's going on now, restrictions are being lifted, things are happening, things are okay. But back then, when we were trying to bend the curve, if you remember all that, we were told to stay in our homes, right? We couldn't even leave our homes. These folks were here. Every day. Doing the right thing. Making sure that this school community had what it needed, and things kept moving forward, because we knew we'd be here today. And we knew we'd be getting back to things, and we had to keep moving forward. So, I'm not going to start about that. I'm not going to bore you and read all of this to you. And there are several slides that talk about the things that were accomplished over the last 14 months. But if you could just take a moment on your own and just read down this list, you're going to see things that are small, some, some that are massive, some that are huge, completing security are small, some, some that are massive, some that are huge. Completing security vestibules around the district, replacing entire sidewalks and construction projects throughout the district, creating new main offices as a result of those security vestibules. In-house, our people, not outside contractors, us in-house, here, every day, doing the job. Here's even more. You can see some of the images of the things that were done, just most recently, the track and field at the high school. Again, there's some of the main entrance to Davenport Elementary, the high school gym floor, totally stripped, totally painted, totally redone, all these things going on when everyone else is home staying safe. Again, you can read down the list, and you can see the things that we took care of keeping things going, and even more. Thirty-six projects took place over the last 14 months, all of them. Some are still ongoing, some are large-scale, burglar alarm replacements, things of that nature. But I just wanted you to be aware of what's been going on, and we're going to keep moving forward. So, in terms of that $10 million, we talked about how we got that $10 million, right? Really, it's based on three goals, if you want to call it that. The first is what I refer to as normal or regular projects. Now, no project is normal or regular. The expenditures are always huge or whatnot. But typically, every year, we would spend approximately $1.5 to $2 million on projects just to keep the district going, reactive projects. If you wanted to describe the district as a ship, you know, keep the old girl moving, we have to just keep things going on. We've got to replace roofs, we've got to replace floors, we've got to fix things, we've got to add things. Those are just regular, everyday things. Second piece of it, and we've identified this previously, is we have to get on roofing. We haven't done any roofing in a long time. We have a lot of square footage of roofing in the district, approximately 2 million square feet, to give it an estimate. We haven't done that in a long time. Typical roof, EPDM is what's typical on roofs, that's the roofing type, 20-year life. So, we've developed a plan to try and start replacing the roofing at a rate that over 20 years, we can accomplish knocking the entire district out. That's also the typical time of a warranty. So, we want to try and keep things in check. Third thing, of course, was mentioned by Ms. Anaya, HVAC. This is something that we've replaced units here and there through the course of years, but we have a huge number of units, and a lot, a very large percentage of those units are near end-of-life, and we've got to start working on those. So, back to step one, back to the normal, regular, everyday, or I should say, every-year projects, I have pages and pages of these things, these needs that were identified. Myself and Ms. Anaya sitting down, reviewing these things, pulled out and extracted what we thought were the most important things to try and hit this year. And you see some of them listed here. Swift playground repaving, we have an issue with water settling there, we have uneven surfaces for the children, it's unsafe for them to play there. Swift gym windows, some reason, years ago, they were closed off. They're now leaking, causing hazards. Can't find the leaks, they're trapped within these old windows that were closed up, we need to replace those. Some regular things, replacing VCT flooring at Davenport, as well as Fernwood. Here in this building, the gutters, the downspouts, we've patched them so many times, it's time to replace those. High school carpet replacement. High school directional signage. Now, we've tried to replace some of the schools' roadside signs in the last couple of years, but now we kind of need to move this forward. You can see even by the picture shown there, this stuff has seen better days. We've got to replace this stuff. The tennis courts at the high school, failing, cracks everywhere, surfaces uneven, can't use it for league play. A culinary arts room over at the high school, set up as kitchens, common materials were used, fireboard, things of that nature, failing, falling apart. We want to try and redo that as well to make that. Our culinary arts program here is very robust. We have a waiting list for students. We're going to properly prepare students for the future in the culinary arts. We're going to give them something, a good teaching environment, that allows them to work in a real commercial kitchen. And then, high school, Fernwood, Davenport Elementary, Alderman School, door replacements. 560 doors have been identified that we need to replace, and you can see some of the images there. They show the condition of some of the doors in these buildings. They're just that old or that beat up. We've got to replace those. So, part one of that $10 million, it's approximately $2.7 million for those projects. Now, the second step I talked about is roofing. So, we met with our architect, we literally walked every roof in the district with him, we examined warranty and the condition of the roofs, and basically, his plan to get us in 20 years to cover the entire district, we need to replace approximately 85,000 square foot of roof a year, okay? Now, the going rate, EPDM, it's about $25 a square foot, that gives us $2.1 million per year, every year, if we're going to keep on track to try and get those things replaced and keep them within warranty. And then, of course, number three, and I'm sure all of you are very familiar with this image many times, the balance of that $10 million, I'll take as much as you folks will give me, honestly, because there's that much to do. But this is the balance of that $10 million, and we plan on dedicating this specifically to the HVAC replacement. Now, we just brought an engineer on record to the district. They started the process of doing an audit, literally going building to building, looking at every single unit, and by age, by condition, by warranty, where they're at, the need, the design, they're going to be developing a plan on which has to be replaced first. But these are the funds that we're going to dedicate in that regard, to the $10 million, from the $10 million, I should say. So, in summary, it's capital improvements, 2.7, roofing, 2.1, and then the HVAC replacement, five, approximately. The unfortunate reality is, and everybody needs to understand, this is not a one-time deal. As I said, I have a five-page document that identifies so many other things. So, just with our minds in place, we need to understand there's still more to do, even once we get that done, and we start moving forward this year. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. President, I have a question. Mr. Brunetta, I couldn't hear you very well over here because of the acoustics, or maybe the microphone. I know that is something we're working on, and we need microphones eventually, so that's a good thing. But you mentioned completed projects that were completed. Was it 36 out of how many?
Oh, boy, a total number? So, that's five, would have to estimate.
If I can talk about how we got that list together. So, that is not a capture of the last 14 months, that is major projects over the last 14 months. So, we talked about it at the committee level, but I'll just share for board now. That's not a routine. We have light bulb changes, or, you know, those typical things that happen throughout the year, where you have to do a plumbing leak fix in the bathroom. These are projects. You have it in board docs for your reference. You also have it from committee report back in May. They're major projects. Pull it up just to give a few examples.
But I mean, you mentioned 36, right?
That was the number that was identified.
Actually completed in the last 14 months.
So, my question was, yeah, 36 were completed out of how many? That was pretty much my question.
I don't have it off the top of my head. I could estimate in the document that I've compiled, and just to give you a little background, basically, every year, when we approach budget time, I contact each of the principals, each of their buildings, and they give me recommendations of things or issues or problems they have in their buildings, as well as my own staff. When they're working in the buildings, they also identify things. So, these things are all brought together, and I basically maintain a constant growing, and I guess it's an evolving, you could say, list of all the things that are happening. I would say at any given time, there's 80 to 85 different projects. Now, from those things, as I said, Ms. Anaya and I will sit down, and based upon importance, based upon the need, some things can wait a little longer, some things can't, we try to prioritize and come up with that list annually to say, hey, of the monies that are available to us, these are the things we're going to try and get done, and we try to knock that list down and keep it going.
So, in other words, I'm hearing like it's a work in progress.
Always.
The list is never actually really completed, then.
Never.
It's a continual process.
Absolutely, absolutely. And with the district this age, some of the buildings, it's inevitable. There's no way around that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ireland?
Mr. Brunetta, I just wanted to say thank you. From my perspective, thank you for doing everything that you did, and your staff for the past couple of months when we were going through the COVID situation. So, thank you, if you can relay that to your staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other board members? Mr. Delmar?
I'm joining. Our appreciation for all your work and your entire staff. You're planning for the future. Do you plan to get that done? Do you have a timeline? Is it the summer, over the next year?
What are you specifically referring to? The projects that we've identified?
The projects that you're going to be starting.
I'm hoping we can accomplish those things within the next year. A lot of these projects, typically, we would try to accomplish over the summer months, because obviously, the schools are empty, we can get things done, we can get contractors in if it's outside, it's my own staff, if we're doing it inside, we try and get it done as quickly as we can. However, because of COVID, and because of the things that are happening, as I'm sure you all know, shipping, gasoline prices, delays and everything, materials at this point of the game are 12 weeks out on average. We were actually given, Ms. Anaya and I were given an estimate by our architect just last week on a larger proposed project, where steel trusses and beams for something are a year out. So, things are delayed to such a point that, yeah, so we'll try and get to it as quickly as we can.
I understand because everybody's suffering, people in building new homes can't get supplies.
And the cost is outrageous, lumber, three times the normal cost.
You have a plan to get through as much as you can.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Sullivan?
Mr. Brunetta, I know that you shared quite a deal with detail with the Finance Committee a few months back, and I remember there were hundreds of calls that your workers get, and how many you complete. If you could possibly share that with the full board, or if you can get something to Mr. Price, so he can actually see how many calls that your people do every single day.
You're referring to work orders?
Right.
Yes, oh, absolutely. I don't have it off the top of my head, but absolutely.
Exactly, exactly. So, I know there are hundreds and hundreds of work orders all the time, and I really appreciate how you've made our buildings, our grounds, look beautiful.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll just close by also thanking you very much, Mr. Brunetta, and your staff. I'm someone who's always saying, we have so many needs in the capital area, and it's easy to overlook it. But, you know, no learning is going to take place unless we have safe and healthy buildings and grounds.
Absolutely.
That sets, you know, the basis for it, and we came to find out during this pandemic, and, you know, it's hopefully winding down, just how important HVAC is, how crucial it was. We knew before how important it was to prevent so many problems, but how crucial it was during this pandemic.
Absolutely.
And it remains so going forward.
Conference is nice, but you've got to clean the air, yeah, the way it goes.
So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.[1330.01][1330.01](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Mr. Brunetta, and I applaud you for all your hard work. And also, I want to add, I applaud you for your vision, your talents that you bring to the school district. We were very fortunate to have you. I appreciate your passion. I feel you when I was up there tonight myself. And that's just an indication, you know, of the care that you have for our assets, your knowledge and your foresight. So, thank you for sharing this evening, and thank you for all that you do. Mr. Castellano, that completes the superintendent's report for the seat.
Very good, thank you. We are going to our first public comment period, which will be on agenda items only. Goes for a three-minute period of time. We'll ask you to come and give your name and address for the record. Public comment, we cannot address some things such as personnel or litigation, private matters, and it may be the case when, where you may have a complex question, we may have to get back to you with the details of the answer. So, we're going to have comments on agenda items only. First, we'll have another comment period later that can be on any item, but this is on agenda items. We'll start with folks here in the room, and then we'll move to our telephones. Come on down. Going once, and going twice. We should have like a little traveling music while we're waiting for these to come in. We should have like a little, you know, something that comes on like a Jeopardy tune or something.
On my note, we're good. Ding.
We're ready?
It's time.
Okay, okay, so we'll have another comment period later. So, we're going to move on to, so I should not sing? Was that the consensus down there? Okay, all right. I'll honor that request. Okay, as long as it's on the agenda, we'll take it. Okay, good. So, we'll hear from them just a little later. We're going to go into Finance and Operations. I'm going to just, since we did have a number of items added since last week, our work meeting, Ms. Anaya, if you have anything to update the board on.
Sure, just a few highlights. Routine things were added on this agenda, monthly stuff, but we have some end-of-year attentions, matters that we'll just talk about. The end-of-year sick time payout is again, when they retire, the sick time compensation package. The contribution to the end-of-year surplus to reserves, the board is authorizing up to $5 million. We know we identified 3.5 even. As we close out the year, it's authorization up to $5 million. The JIF surplus amount, most times, we know what the JIF surplus is. We apply that discount on our budget time. We did not have a number during budget time, so we're holding that just that amount for future, future years. And petty cash, Delta Dino, everything else is pretty much a renewal. We do have the IDEA and the ESSA grants on here for the application process, and we're renewing some bids and awarding the lease contract, lease purchase contract on this agenda. If there's any questions, lights, please.
Any questions on that?
And we did have some, and we did have, going to real quick, from the Friday agenda board, comp board questions that came through in the finance area. Can we get that up real So, there was a question about the JIF insurance, which I just explained, as well as the capital reserve. The health insurance increase, we did talk about at budget time, but in a nutshell, anticipated to be about a million-dollar difference. I am on a committee at the state level with school board officials. They're doing a study and going to take up specific types of schools with specific types of coverage up to trend to show the impact to whether you're self-funded, large district, small district, in-state, and open different layers to show how overall this was a good thing for employees, which is great, that you guys matter. But it's a burden on the board with this Chapter 44 change. So, that's a resolution that we're passing tonight also. And that concludes my report. Further questions?
Okay, very good. So, we'll do motions, and then we'll have discussion to capture any other questions. So, first, I'm going to ask for motion on 7.1, please.
Motion.
Second. Is there any discussion on 7.1? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. I'll now entertain a motion on 7.2 through 7.26.
So, move.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move into curriculum, and I'm gonna ask for a motion on 8.1 through 8.2.
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion on curriculum? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Moving to personnel. Can I have a motion on 9.1 through 9.4, please?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No interview this week. Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, just what our, many of our audience members have been waiting for, this exciting moment to be announced for the first time in public as an A Harbor Township employee. I will begin with Mr. Robert Kurt, who is special education math teacher at Eagle Academy. Madeline Bauer, teacher at the high school. Jennifer Zep, athletic trainer at the high school. Stephen Espino, special education teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School. Brianna Tyfer, teacher at Alder Middle School. Gillian Gasko, teacher at Alder Middle School. Alexis Di Mercio, interventionist at Alder Avenue Middle School. Carolyn Nagel, special education teacher at Miller School. Also a special education teacher at Miller School, Miss Stephanie Welty. Ellen Davenport, school nurse, Randy Boats. Good luck, everybody. Congratulations and welcome. Now... Of course, you can join us for the rest of the meeting, but if you have other plans for this evening, congratulations, welcome, and see you later if you have to go.
Welcome, guys. Congratulations to all of you. Welcome on board. You won't hurt our feelings if you decide to take off and head out. I think there's a basketball game on tonight. Wow, I take that back. Somebody stay. I'm just kidding. Just a little humor there. No, no, no. All right, so we certainly welcome them. We are going to now move to policy. And can I have a motion for 10.1 through 10.18?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Was that Terry?
Okay.
That's okay, it's quiet.
Ms. Alabarda and Mr. Price. Is there any discussion on policy? Mrs. Byrd?
Yes, I would like the board to consider tabling 10.17, policy 7510. We're still waiting on some information from admin, and rather than move forward with it, I'm asking that we table until next month's regular meeting. Use of facilities.
Mr. Ireland?
I agree with our chair for policy committee that if we can table 10.17, the policy 7510, use of the school facilities until we get our presentation by the administration. And we also have a lot more discussion from fellow board members on this topic. If we can just take care of one policy and just, we can go through it through a fine-tooth comb and then approve it instead of going back and forth multiple times on it, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so those folks who made the motion in the second, are they all right making that adjustment?
Yes. I have Mr. Delabarga made the first motion and then Mr. Alabarda.
Yes, I agree with tabling.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so everyone's okay with that? Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, we have two items of new business, that resolution on chapter 44 that we had discussed, and also to adopt our board norms we developed at our offsite and we discussed last week at our work session. So that would be, I'd ask for motion on 11.1 through 11.2.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Ireland?
Is there a way that we can hold off on the board norms possibly and just explore it a little bit? We explored it during our board retreat, but then we were kind of cut off because of time constraints. I respect the fact that we went through and we took the time and we completely changed the board norms from the previous norms that we had on there, and we actually made it to like a statement impact instead of a one-word norm. But if we can possibly table it or have more discussion on it, have a little bit more teamwork maybe, a little bit more collaboration from all different perspectives before we sign off on it, because we are going to be held to a board norm. That's what we're signing our name to, and that's what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be adhering to those norms. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay, Mrs. Byrd?
I agree with Mr. Ireland on maybe reworking the norms a little bit more, putting a little bit more effort, group effort into it. I think that they seem a little bit undeveloped. And I would like to see, I would like to see them be a little bit more specific. And maybe we need to collaborate a little bit more to, to have norms that everyone can uphold and maintain.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I concur with my fellow board members.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Delabarga?
I'm in total agreement. I think we need some more work on it. I think we have a good start here. I think we should get into more detail. And please, anyone on the board, don't take this wrong, but I would suggest that we don't have the titles of president, vice president on the listed names, because that changes. I'd say it should be our name list that we sign there, if you look at the sample that's on our agenda.
Okay, so I appreciate that. You know, this, again, we put this together at our offsite. We brought school boards in to do it. I'm hearing we want, now we want to revisit, we want teamwork, and that's, I agree with all those things, so I'm looking for a suggestion. Do we need an ad hoc committee to rework them? Because we don't have a, another offsite scheduled for the summer, so why don't we, we have some volunteers who would want to rework it? Okay, I'm gonna get, get to that. I have Mrs. Gilbert Floyd next.
I just want to say that I'm glad that this was brought up, because I was unable to attend the board retreat. Not that, you know, I would like to think that some of my input and maybe some of my suggestions could help us round it out, no pun intended. So I'm looking, so I'm looking, I'm looking forward to being able to participate in, in that. So I, and I'm not sure of all the details of, if you said ad hoc committee, but... I don't know if anyone's going to agree with this, or even if it's something that we could do. But are we allowed to discuss that in an executive, or is that just when not, when, can't take place during exec? I'm just thinking of that we're all here, not today, but if we're all in one place.
Yeah, I think it would be a public discussion, just like the retreat was in public. But I think that, as Mr. Castellano said, if you do an ad hoc committee, you can have those private discussions, or you could do it, you can pick a board meeting and a work session and do it, however you're choosing to do it. That's up to you guys as a board.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I would like the full board to be involved. I think everybody else, well, I would like a full board discussion.
When, when would you like that to take place?
Whenever we can schedule it and fit it in that we have plenty of time at our retreat. It was like the last five minutes of, of the retreat. I think we need more time to, for all of us to speak.
Okay. Again, you know, school boards facilitated our retreat. It, it was helpful, useful to a great extent. So I'm just, you know, looking for the best forum and the best, the best method to move forward with this. We're heading now into the summer months. Do you foresee having us meeting as a committee of the whole year during a regular meeting and rewriting these? I mean, I just don't know what folks are looking for us to do. That's, I mean, that's why we had a retreat, but whatever the board would like to do, I'm, I'm fine. I'm open to suggestions. I have Mrs. Solagi, then I have Mrs. Byrd.
Work session, we do a work session?
Yep.
If that's what the board would like to do, we will discuss it, we will put it on for our next work session, and we can do whatever folks would like to do with the, with the norms. Any, any other, any other comments? So we, you know, okay, all right, so we're going to put that on hold. And we're gonna have those who made the motion, we're gonna amend that, so it's just gonna be 11.2. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. We need to move into old business. We have HIV in our discipline determination, and I'm gonna have Mrs. Hauk Elko read that motion or motions.
I would ask the board to entertain a motion to affirm the HIV determination as discussed in executive session for JD05, 2021, F01, 2021, as well as to approve DH4 from 2021, also discussed in executive session.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarga?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
No.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. We have a new board calendar for everyone, and NJSBA, anything for us, Mr. Delabarga?
Thank you, Mr. President. The officers of the Atlantic County School Boards Association will be meeting on July 7th to plan for our fall meetings. These meetings will be hybrid and details will follow. Some of the topics that might be considered for the fall are later school start times, team building, where have I heard that before, cybersecurity best practices, student wearing masks discussions, academic recovery, and there's about eight more possible topics that will try to narrow them down for the fall. If you have any suggestions, board members, and you would like to relate them to me, either Patrick or I, it would be appreciated, so that we can discuss them on the, at the July 7th meeting. School Board is having a county leaders hybrid meeting on July 12th. So I know we're going to participate probably hybrid the first time around. And then they're planning a meeting for the southern part of the state in August, and then another meeting in August for the Dordham Park. So I believe our officers will probably attend in person for the southern part meeting. We're still planning the luncheon for NJ, New Jersey School Boards, Jay Kerschner, on July 14th. If any of you are interested, let me know. It's probably going to be at the Atlantic City Country Club at 12:30. So we have about 15 people already interested, so we're trying to finalize details. I was talking to Vice President Henry Gold Smith today, and he's making the arrangements. So let me know as soon as you can, email me or text me or whatever, so that we, we're just trying to get a good count so we can make plans. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So at this point, we are going to move now into our second public comment on any topic. And I've already read the rules of the road. We'll start in the room. This butcher.
I don't have.
No, come on down.
I have none. I'm like, I know it's shocking.
Okay. We'll go to the phones.
Make a potential public comment, name and address, please. I have your information. Hold on one second. You are now live streaming. Go ahead with your public comment.
Hi, I just wanted to know if critical race theory will be part of the curriculum for this upcoming year?
Excuse me, Ms. Hires, I made a mistake. We're gonna do your name and address and then your public comment, because now you're live streaming, even though you gave it to me already. I'm sorry about that. It's been a while. Go ahead, Brooke Hires, and go ahead with your address.
My address is 245 Seapine Drive.
Okay. And now go ahead with your public comment. Sorry about that.
I just had a question about the curriculum for this upcoming fall. I wanted to know if critical race theory was going to be implemented?
The critical which series, I'm sorry? Pace?
Critical race theory?
They know what it is, never mind. We're good. They got it, okay. Any other comments?
No, that's it. I just know it's going to be implemented.
All right, thank you.
I'll ask our educators.
We're gonna have to get back to you on that. As we're just closing up the school year, as we go into next year and meet with our curriculum meetings and our teams, you know, we will review that topic.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The phone number is still up. We'll wait another few minutes, a minute or so.
Ding.
Okay, okay, we are, that's it for our public comment, and we will go to board member comment. Any board members? Mrs. Sullivan?
I'd like to know, I don't know how we go about this, Beth, I'd like to go and observe equity training that we're going to be doing.
We would be glad to share, if you don't mind, but I just, we would be glad to share what our schedule's gonna be and who's included in that training. So I'm gonna turn to Ms. Moss, because she is the brains behind a lot of this in terms of securing the peer group from Rowan University. We had a meeting with Dr. Zion a couple weeks ago, and I was very impressed with what I heard, so I gave Ms. Moss the go-ahead to pick dates and start to implement, and you are included, so we're gonna let her share.
I was, I was just gonna share that. Not only do you get to observe it, you get to participate in it. So that's a really exciting piece for us. So we actually were just solidifying dates with them today to be part of our admin meetings in August, to start with the admin team first with the training. At that time, we will, you, I'm sure, will be invited to one of those to observe, but then we're also gonna map out when and how we're going to be able to do that with the board, so during probably a work session as well, start that work with you. And we're really excited for that, because it is inclusive of the whole community, our whole staff, everybody within that, so, and you are an integral part of our team, so it's very important. So yes, tentatively, we are scheduled to begin August eighteenth, just so you know.
So August eighteenth and nineteenth will be administrative training. I received a phone call, many phone calls today, with the county superintendent, and I was sharing some of our projects this summer, our programs. He, by speaking, he is, he will be coming to, into the district next week to observe the Aspire program, but he wants to participate in the equity training in, on August eighteenth and nineteenth. So our initiative has some attention at the county level, and he will be involved with that, so, you know, that, that's a great thing. And also, just to add to this, I was in touch with Phil Voight, and we're looking to bring him back in September to work with administration and the Board of Education. As you remember, that's Climate and Culture, but also has, has an equity piece as well. So there's some upcoming events for you, and as I say, well, it seems like it's, you know, the end of June and September is far away. It really isn't. Okay?
One more question than that. Do you have any, besides that a board meeting, do we have any, you said the whole community's involved, so will, will there be any viewing for the whole commu- community?
Yeah, so part of it is, there's a big belief in our Equity Council team, district team and administrator team being trained first, so that we have a clear vision and miss, mission and using language the same way. And then from there, we'll plan our steps to be able to bring the community in. Something that, that they also can be a part of and something while we're kind of trying to start sooner, is that part of our strategic planning process also. So they will help guide us, so once we have our goals and we go through the training and then we do our audit and we're able to see where we are with our staff and our community and our students, more importantly, then we'll be able to have them part of that process as well, to ensure that everything that we're doing moving forward as we recreate those goals and plans for the future, that that's at the forefront of our planning.
Thank you, of course.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
To say that I'm elated to hear that the initiative to, to even have a discussion about equity and having those, as I always call them, those courageous conversations, I'm just beyond excited. It is a passion of mine and just want to say that, you know, on another note, when you talked about involving the community and, you know, kind of layering it, making it a whole community almost initiative, I will say, I, I know when the township clerk, he's since retired, I don't know how his name escaped me, Mr. Miller. Mr. Mill, Mr. Miller and I started conversations in reference to having an equity committee in the township. And we started the conversation and recently went to one of the township committee meetings and just to respark, continue the conversation, because COVID happened and, and everything, so there is conversation started with the township committee, the current administrator in reference to possibly having a, some type of equity committee. It, it, what I would like to see, of course, is to be part of the infrastructure of the township. And it, the conversation is, is open, it's on the table, and the mayor's aware of it as well. There's nothing set in stone, but the conversation has started and they're open to it, and I'm excited about that. I, when I went, I went and I told him, I'm not here as board member, I'm here as a citizen. And so I'm really excited, because the conversation has to happen, and I think that's where it starts. Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
I think that that would be great, and especially as we're doing that work, and, you know, as Mr. Ellis said before, if that were, you know, being able to come together and bring that all into one strong community, I think will benefit us all, and especially our kids. So that sounds amazing if that communication continues, which I'm sure you will continue to communicate with us. But I also just wanted to recognize Dr. Graham and Mrs. Froyne and Ms. Hannigan, because they also are very passionate about this and have been major players in making all of this happen. So it'll continue to be a team effort as we move forward.
Anyone else? Mrs. Bird?
Thank you. I was wondering if we could maybe put a blurb on our Board of Education tab on the website, directing community members if they would like to go out to become a school board member? Maybe the paperwork or the process, some kind of link directing them to the county clerk, so that they're informed on the process and how to go about if they want to volunteer as a school board member.
This is not, good.
So traditionally, we can do that. Traditionally, if we've had open seats, we've done that, but with all incumbents, we haven't. So I'll just take it, whatever direction the board wants with that, as board secretary. Just let me know.
So up to the board?
Well.
Comment? Comment? Yes.
Yes, my first comment, so thank you for your patience, but on this go-around.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. Just put it out there, and I do remember where it was before, and I guess that was the reasoning behind it, but it can't hurt. Other districts do it as well, just to let them know that information's available and you can contact so-and-so for a packet and go from there. I don't see, you know, I think it's a good idea.
We actually have it available online. It's not even contact anyone, it's just a direct download for them to find out, is what we usually do.
So you can just give them information, and here it is. Yeah? I think it's a good idea, so that's my opinion. Thank you.
Sure. Did I have anybody here, or Mrs. Bird again?
I'm up for reelection, and I just think when I ran the first time, it would have been helpful to have a direct spot, and so being up for reelection, I think that, you know, if other people wanna run too, it would just be nice to have something that's welcoming and, you know, because whoever makes it up here, if you have something to contribute, that's what's great for our district, whether it's me or whoever else is running. But having a quick access point, I think, would help our community. So that's why I made the suggestion. Excuse my voice, my allergy is a little bit.
Okay, good enough. And Mrs. Sullivan?
No, I'm not up for reelection, but I wonder if we make it really more prominent than normal, does that perhaps show that we are not fully efficient with who we have on here? I mean, I would like to know, I would like people to know that I support my fellow board members. So that's just a, a way of something being perceived by the public, that's all.
Mrs. Hauck Elko?
I was just gonna say that I think it is more common to have districts just have general information for people looking to run on their website, and that I don't think it implies anything about your current board members, just that it's information for the public if they're interested, because sometimes people just are unsure how to apply what they need to do, so I think it's a helpful service.
Okay. So we'll do that. Any other board member comments? Ms. Alabarda?
I just wanna say how excited I am about the upcoming PDs. Knowledge is power, and just the more we learn, I mean, as a teacher, I like to learn all the time, so, I mean, I'm very excited, and Phil Voight, his PD really changed my thinking and the way I, I am. So I'm very excited about these PDs coming up. I think that everyone is going to learn a lot. It'll be amazing.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. I will see, but okay.
Yeah, and I'm not offended, it's all right. So I was just, and you know, I was thinking about, you know, it was when Mr. Ellis came up and talked and spoke, when he got his award, I think he said some very important things. And one thing that he said, that he felt like he, there's certain things that he set out to do as a board member, things that were really like a passion or a burden for him, that he didn't get, he felt like he didn't get to achieve them. So I haven't, I've been thinking about this particular Board of Education, the people that are here presently, and I've always said this, you know, if, if we're gonna be on the board, then we need to be impactful. We need to make sure that we are, and of course, I know there's the staff, they are very important. We couldn't do it without the staff, custodians, teachers, everyone. I don't even wanna name you, because I'll leave someone out. But when I think of the community and what we are really, our true mission as a Board of Education, we all know that our only employee is the superintendent. That's the only person that we evaluate. And, but I also think that if we're, if we're gonna be on the board, you go through the process and you run and you get elected, is to make an impactful change, and I really think the impactful change, of course, comes through our committees that we serve on, but it also comes through doing something different. And I just have, I'm just posing this question to our Board of Education, what are we gonna do different that other Board of Education members that sat here didn't do? What are we gonna do differently? How are we gonna stand out? What's gonna be our legacy that we leave behind? You know, and I keep thinking about different events. I know we can go to events at schools, but I just really wanted to think about and process, maybe, how we as a Board of Education, how we can also reach out to the community in different ways. You know, and I know everyone joked me about my bus, but I always say, you know, whether we get on the bus, and I know that has to be an advertised meeting, but think out of the box and do some things that are a little bit different and that we can really be impactful and that, that the children at the school will say, you know, when I remember when that Board of Education, they came out to my neighborhood, or they came, or they did whatever. I just think we have to really, it helps us focus on why we're really here and get all the, the noise, the, the white noise and the other stuff that doesn't mean anything, and really focus on why we're, we're here, to impact our district and our community. So that's just, I was just thinking about that, and I wanted to share that with you all, just to leave that for us all to think about.
Anyone else? Well, I mean, I guess just my thought is, this year, full day kindergarten, universal preschool, those are pretty big deals, right? So we should build on that.
Yeah, I, I think they are, and I'm not saying that they weren't impactful. In no way, shape or form, I'm saying that we didn't. I totally agree. I'm just talking about those things that, that also children will remember too. You know, some students don't even know that, they may not know that we have full day kindergarten, they may not understand the impact and how big of a deal that is right now. I'm just talking about some things we can do in addition to our duties and all the great things that we have done, like leading through a, no doubt of that. I'm just talking about moving forward, just to do some also things that, you know, ten years from now, kids will say, I remember when, or just to make sure we grab those students and make those children who grow up, say, hey, you know what? I want my kids to go to Akerbret Township School District, because I had this experience and I remember different things of that nature. So just to be even a little bit more like in the trenches in addition to our policies and programs that we put in place.
Okay. Anything from our administration before we wind down?
No, not really. I just wanna share, sort of the board, and I know my staff noticed my little black book and a lot of my colleagues use computers, but someone once told me that if you didn't write it down, it didn't happen. And I, I went back to the beginning of, and I labeled it twenty twenty, twenty twenty twenty-one, the, the upside down, and I just wrote the year from hell, but anyway. It's like, it's like turned to the first page, and it reminds me going back to the end of August, the road back to school, executive order one seventy-five, outdoor classrooms, substitute research, check our ventilation, NJ DOH, counselors and special education students, is our HVAC bandwidth, walk-throughs, on and on and on, and many pages and drawings, because I, I like to doodle, but here we are, perfect timing, last page. And I, I, it's my journal, so I wrote, we did it, we survived, another fiscal year completed. Thank you and good night.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive. We need to take care of a piece of business, but there will be no action taken following that. So we will just be adjourning to executive and then we will come back to open and adjourn the meeting. No action will be taken. So can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
This is for the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, motion?
There's a motion, I heard.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor? We adjourn. To executive.